Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice of March 21st, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, faxed to the Nutley son and star letter email to tap into Nutley, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can we stand for applause? Roll call, Mrs. Cruzep.
Ms. Jen Martin, here.
Mr. DeBaal.
Here.
Mr. Marau.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Riley. Mrs. Sklera. Ms. Sauer.
Here.
Ms. Ari Salam.
Here. Tonight, we have two members. One was unable to attend the meeting. The other had a conflict. So, we will continue our meeting tonight with the people that are here. Okay. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address a board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for this communication, and each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to state within this required. All statements will be directed to me as a chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, signing with Mrs. Cruzep before you take the microphone. So, a couple of things that we're going to do today with the amount of people that are here this evening. We're going to hold the hearing portion to 30 minutes. We have yellow and red cards here. We're going to try to give you some indication as you're getting closer. One minute mark will be yellow. Red will be... We need you to finish up so that we can try to get as many statements available and get them back. And what I will do now is I will start pulling people from the list that I have in front of me and order them to sign in, and we will continue to move through until we reach the 30-minute mark. First person, and I have a list here this evening, is Bill Edelman. Correct. And if you can, we're just going to ask that everyone be disrespectful of the cards because I know that a lot of people want to be heard. So, I just want to make sure that we give everybody as much time as we please. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, excuse my back. My name is Bill Edelman. A bit about myself, which I hope will add to the credibility regarding my forthcoming remarks. I spent 25 years as the athletic director at current township high school in northwest New Jersey, and am now retired living in Delaware. I spent 16 years on the executive committee of the Directors of Athletics Association in New Jersey, where I was as president. I spent two terms on the executive committee of the NJSA. I also served on the eligibility appeals committee. The second term was by as chair of this committee. I also served on the public, not public, committee. I've had an opportunity to present topics at five national conferences, and I was fortunate enough to be on as the state athletic director of the year and the NJSIA award of honor recipient. My greatest thrill, however, was watching my son receive his diploma from General Joseph Dunford, chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, when he graduated from the United States Air Force Academy. I always shared with my coaches and professional colleagues that when one has the opportunity to speak in this type of forum, that he half-prepared remarks, and this way, one can avoid rambling on him. I hope a brief glance at my professional background will give credence to my remarks. Vernon and Nutley have had a long and successful relationship, going back to the days of Angelo Franacola and Angelo's AD. Joe Pyro stepped in and has continued that strong relationship. It was always a pleasure for our teams to travel to Nutley. Our coaches would consistently return and share that they were treated like Jesus. Joe would often call me up once scrimmages started in the spring and say, "Bill, I know you're still snowing in, bringing your teams down to scrimmages." So, much of being an AD is establishing and growing relationships, and Joe is second to none in creating and building that bond, which is so essential for what we do as ADs. Good coaches convince their athletes that they are the best things in sliced bread. They continue to build bridges, not break them down. As long as I've known Joe Pyro, he exemplifies what I've just shared. He makes you feel special. He has been an advocate for our youth, and I've never known him to be anything but an ambassador of goodwill, ethical fairness, and integrity. We had many heated discussions while sitting on the public, non-public committee, and Joe always attempted to find common ground and hone us together. Joe made a mistake, and for this, he has apologized, offering in sports the biggest trades of the trades that are not made. Fifteen years ago, give or take, the sophomore daughters of our superintendent, who I would run into the wall for, and our Viking Club president violated our athletic acknowledgement, both going to be removed from the basketball team. Sitting in front of me in my office as parents with a superintendent and a booster club president, who by the way was the best president I've ever had, I shared following with them. Good kids, just like adults at times, do dumb things. That does not make them bad people. A good person is a good person, and their daughters were good kids. Joe Pyro is a good person. I also shared that this incident may, in fact, buy the both of them two and a half years of a peaceful high school experience, and in fact, it did. Both girls regretted what they did.
Mr. Edelman, I'm going to ask you to just try to wrap it up.
I will. They felt terrible for what they put their parents through, and they went on to represent Vernon in the exemplary matter. I know Joe has learned from this experience. I know in the world of high school athletics, players value their coaches, just like coaches value their athletic administrators, who support them when times are difficult. After all, everyone wants to win. However, educational-based athletics is more than winning. It's supporting one another when things get difficult. It's picking a teammate up, and here she falls. I sincerely hope this Board of Education will see what Joe Pyro can continue to offer to Nutley School District and support him during this challenging and difficult time. I thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with you. I have a long ride back to Delaware with retirement. I have an early tea time tomorrow morning. If I can ask any questions, I'd be more than happy.
Thank you. Next person is Ron Bligh.
Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of Joe. Joe is a leader of athletics in Essex County. He has made our organization, which I am also a member, one of the leading conferences and counties in the state. He is a leader, and he's also a man of character and integrity. I've been through some rough times. My wife had a battle with cancer, and there was one thing I could always count on, that every week or so, Joe would get on the phone and give me a call, try to pick my spirits up, and I don't forget things like that. And that's the type of person Joe is. So, tonight, if there's any decisions to be made, I hope you judge him as a person, because he is certainly a great leader being. And that's all the time I'm going to take right now.
Thank you. Next up is Steve Timko.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Steve Timko. I have 51 and a half years in education, 42 and a half years in athletic administration, and am the retired executive director of NJSIA. I've known Joe for 12 years. Joe served on multiple committees at NJSIA, the league and conference committee, which he always was able to bring logical information to the rest of the committee. He served, as Bill had indicated, on the public, non-public committee, and was also instrumental in doing the Big North Football Conference that had a lot of controversy involved in it relative to public and non-public schools. And because of Joe's input, we were able to work through that whole process. I think I found Joe to be a caring, involved, and always wanted to be the best, do the best for the student athletes of Nutley. In trying to make a point in his presentation, his words chosen on the spot, hardly horribly misrepresented the actual point. This can happen to anyone who speaks in front of a group without reading from a prepared script, which is what I'm doing right now to make sure that that doesn't happen. And why, in doing so, as of now, maybe this has happened to some of us, maybe to some of you, while making your own presentations. But I think Joe actually knows how horrible the situation was, and the actions of Hitler, and those of us who have parents and relatives that served in World War II, also understand this fact and know how horrible this was. This was not the point that Joe Pyro was trying to make, and I hope every consideration is given for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted Galeseio.
Good evening. My name is Ted Galeseio. I'm retired. I was in education for 40 years. 23 as an athletic director in the Milton Township Public School System, and a friend and former colleague of Joe Pyro. To say that I respect and admire Joe would be an understatement. His commitment to Nutley athletes and his expectation of his coaches is held in high regard by everyone in the profession. Joe never loses sight of the important role athletic participation plays in this community, but I'm pretty sure everyone knows that. During his tenure, Joe has earned numerous honors in athletic administration, to name a few. Joe was selected as the DAANJ Satchel Award America's of the Year in 2015, the Essex County Athletic Director of the Year in 2017, and most recently, the DAANJ Bob Hope Act Professional Service Award. This award is named after our present executive director and one of the most... And is presented only to those most deserving in the state. But I know you already know this. You may not know, however, about the many roles he has played in athletics at the state, county, and conference level. Joe works tirelessly, collaborating and coordinating programs locally and statewide, making Nutley and New Jersey athletics the recognized model it has become. His non-stop commitment to excellence is impressive. Joe is the go-to guy within the state. But I'm sure you know all this. On a personal note, Joe's exceptional kindness towards my autistic daughter truly goes beyond words, but I will give you some anyway. Whenever I speak to Joe, he never fails to ask about our daughter, Claire. Whenever we are together, he always gives her a big hello. At our recent Athletic Directors Conference, Joe asked to have his picture taken with Claire in front of the backdrop reserved only for award winners. Joe instinctively knew the smile that this would bring to her face. He was spot on. You see, Joe doesn't have to be taught how to treat young people. He lives it. My wife calls in to jump to China, and at times, I agree. Joe is thoughtful, considerate, and effective. He is a top-notch athletic director and educator. But you already know this. Thank you.
And you. Next, we have Sean Dowling.
Good evening. My name is Sean Dowling. I'm the athletic director of Madison High School. Six years ago, Joe asked me to come and speak with his coaches at his coaches' academy, and he has in the summer, to talk about student leadership. Joe and I present at a national level together in regards to different aspects of athletic administration. I thought I was mandated, not mandated, it was... I was mandated to ramp up our leadership training, not only to our captains, but our athletes at Madison High School. What better person could bring it to talk about leadership than Joe Pyro? Engaging, dynamic, okay? It was getting answers from the kids, and Joe never glorified Hitler. No, I'm here to offer my assistance to anybody. I'll stay as late as you want me to, okay? If you have any questions about what happened that day. I had two emails from students who got it. I recognized that, and they talked about things, about learning in their U.S. World History class, about Hitler, Stalin, Tojo, and effective leaders who were bad people. So, once again, Mr. Pyro never glorified Hitler, and he went on... One of the students went home and engaged in a meaningful dialogue with their parents, which should happen when students hear something in school that they may not agree with or don't understand. I'm going to take some culpability. I had juniors and seniors in there that probably had that U.S. History class, and I had young freshmen in there and sophomores that made me feel regardless. We polled coaches. We polled students, and most understood what Mr. Pyro said with all investigation. Like I said, I'm here to hear a lot about his wonderful character, which you already know. So, again, I'm here available. I'll stay all night if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Rosenberg.
Just follow the tall guy. Scott Rosenberg. I'll repeat my last name Rosenberg for a reason. Joe has been a friend, a mentor, a brother. Joe brings people together. Joe is a broker of goodwill, and Joe is a friend to all. I was here one summer. We were meeting about some football stuff, and I was walking down the streets to get lunch on Main Street here in Nutley, and I felt like I was walking with a celebrity. Cars were honking, people were yelling Pyro out the window. I think I remember saying, "Hey, Joe, if you need a bodyguard, I'm the man." Fact of the matter is, is he's loved here in town, and for the right reasons. Joe made a mistake in the things he said, and I know he is owning up to those mistakes. Yet, that mistake was not done out of malice. It was just a mistake. I do believe that there's a teachable moment here, and I do believe that what we teach young kids is important. People are watching right now. Kids are watching. Students are watching. Adults are watching. And I have two young kids, and I think deeply every day about the lessons, the life lessons I want to teach my own kids. And I think that one of those lessons, or a couple of lessons, are about forgiveness and working through difficult times. And I know Joe is willing to work through those times, and I hope you are as well. He's been a loyal soldier and an incredible representative of your community. He's been on the front lines. Through his leadership goals, Joe has given, I have to guess, hundreds to thousands of interviews. He's given many speeches. To put in athletic terms, Joe's batting about 990 right now. I think that he should be given every consideration of all the good things that he's done and allow him to work through any issues that come from the mistake that he made. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rory Ward.
I respectfully pass.
Mr. Alex D'Antonio.
Unlike a lot of people who are not here at all, I've been in Nutley my whole life. I lived at 609 Bluefield Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey. I'm 63 years old. In 10th grade, I lost my leg playing football for Nutley High School. I was in hospital for six operations, 12 over 100 days. I wrestled for Nutley without my leg my senior year. I just want to say that about this speech, though, the way the world is today with social media and transparency, this speech should have never been made, period, let alone at a high school athletic function on leadership. This casto was a total embarrassment to the township of Nutley, the Board of Education, and every person and child that lives in Nutley. This gentleman is supposed to represent all of us. We, all the people of Nutley, are owed an apology by an athletic director. You think that we would have given a speech on sports and leadership by using an example of a high school, a college, or pro coach that was a great leader? For instance, Patricia Padsumit, former basketball coach in Tennessee, or Luke Rockton, or Vincent Lard, a Green Bay Packers, or John Wooden from UCLA, or Nancy Wood, short regional high school coach. Forty-four years she coached Field Night. Had a record of 839 wins, 67 losses, 56 ties. One thing I'm going to say about my character. When I came back to school in my junior year at Nutley High, the principal was Mr. David Rockton, and he signed my yearbook, because back then, everybody wrote yearbooks because they all have friends that are seniors. And this is what Mr. Rockton wrote. "Here, Alex, your courage has given me a lesson in life. Be strong and continue to be the great man you are. If I had a son, I would want him to have all of your qualities." Questions that you have, should be asked in Mr. Pyro are: One, why did you leave Paramus High School? Two, how did you get a job in Nutley? How did you become athletic director? One of his former secretaries, who I believe works in the board's superintendent's office...
Mr. D'Antonio, I don't have an issue with you making a statement. We're trying to...
I'm not mentioning any names that did no longer work for him because of his foul mouth and his constant yelling at people in his office or on the phone. The secretary that works in the superintendent's office. How about the teachers who complained to the administration about his screaming profanities?
All right, Mr. D'Antonio, we're going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
No, I think I deserve. I've made my news in this town.
I understand that.
I want people to know what's really going on.
We're trying to give everybody equal time.
I'll speak to anybody after the meeting. I want them to know everything else.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Greg Butler.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's been a pleasure. My name is Greg Butler. I am the current athletic director at Northern Valley Davis High School. I've been involved in education for the past 36 years as a teacher, coach, supervisor, assistant principal, and currently, as they say, as an athletic director. I'm proud to say I was hired by the Nutley Board of Education from 2002 to 2009 as a football coach. Also proud to say my daughter, Brittany, and my son, Matthew, graduated from Nutley High School. Nutley High School, and Nutley is a very important part of my life and my children's life. I'm here today to support a man that I love. I want to tell you a little bit about mine, my family. I know about education. My grandfather was a supervisor. My other grandfather was a supervisor of buildings and grounds. My father was a teacher for 40 years. My mother was an administrative assistant for superintendent of schools. My brother is a guidance counselor. My daughter, as I mentioned, Nutley graduate, is a math teacher. My son is a phys ed teacher and a coach. My family lives public education. I applaud each and every one of you sitting up there, because I know the responsibility you have, and I applaud you. I know the responsibility I have as a leader, to measure and weigh and evaluate people. The thing I always weigh most is someone's heart. I have been very fortunate in my career that people supported me, leaders, Board of Education members, superintendents, supported me when I did something wrong or made a mistake, because they believed in me and they believed it was in my heart. Joe Pyro has a heart of gold. Joe Pyro loves this town. Joe Pyro loves Nutley High School. Joe Pyro loves the kids of Nutley. He will do anything for them. I've seen it firsthand. I just hope that you, when you evaluate, no one's perfect, or when you put on the scale of good and bad, and when someone's heart, look into that heart, and you will see you have a man that's well-respected. He is respected by his colleagues. You asked Laura Grasso and the Grasso family what type of man he is. He was a leader, and he came to raise $80,000 for that family. And Jim Grasso passed away sadly by cancer. He's a leader. He asked me to lead the Super Football Conference. He's been recognized by the director of athletics for a special award. I go on and on, but to me, that means nothing. It's about his heart, and what he cares about the students as much as you care about the students. The one thing I loved about Nutley when I was here, it was a special bar that I really... It was special. It was old-school. Yet, everybody was held accountable, but when you believed in somebody's heart, you stood by them. And that's what we think of as always special in my tenure here. And I'm asking you, to be that special in Nutley that I know, and while my kids still live in this town, make us proud and weigh all the facts, and please listen to everyone here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Steve DiGloria.
Hello, everyone. My name is Steve DiGloria. I work across the street. I am honored to be a history teacher, senior football coach, and twice. Let the record show, I honor Greg Butler. Okay, my boss. I coached Matt, and I taught Brittany. And he is... Greg Brooks of Buckingham County is really a big guy. I grew up here, and I'm honored to have come back to work with the Board of Education in the capacity that I just said. And just a couple of things. I'm going to take a lot of time. I want to speak about Joe's heart. And I know that's resonating with you. Just give me a couple of examples of how I received Joe's heart and his character. You know, we had a wall problem in the weight room for two years that refused to get fixed. Joe, over February break, goes down with his belt, with his hammer, with his nails, with the sheet rock, and sheet rocks the whole side of the weight room that needed for two years. Now, there are a lot of really great ADs here tonight. How many guys sheet rock your weight room? Come on, can't you do? And we go, "But..." Dennis?
No.
And it's... That's what Joe does, okay? That's what he does. I think nobody in New Jersey did that. We played belt this year at the restaurant that we used for breakfast could not accommodate us. So, who did we have breakfast? At Joe's house. Who did we have dinner at night before? At Joe's house. 60 players, and staff. So, add it to what we're eating, cooked with the help of our booster club. And on a very personal note, some of you know, maybe some of you don't, some behind me may know, that my family's been challenged for a number of years with a very, very serious health issue with one of my sons. We had two major fundraisers that many years, about 10 years ago and nine years ago. We had this incredible auction, and our auctioneer had to bail on us less than a day before the event. So, who was our auctioneer? Joe. One of my friends, who Joe does not know, said, "Man, that guy got up and he raised $10,000 in two minutes." It's about right. It's Joe's heart, and it's what I look forward to, the anticipation of working with Joe and working alongside him as athletic director for many years to come. Thank you.
So, we're coming up on that half hour. We're going to ask two more people to come up that are on the list here, and then we're going to move forward to go into closed session. The next person on the list is Dennis Nelson.
Thank you. I'm Dennis Nelson, and the athletic director of Riverdale High School, and have been a teacher, coach, athletic director for 26 years. I understand how challenging... I understand how challenging sometimes it is to be a role of a Board of Education member can be, but I don't see this as being really one of those times necessarily. I think you have an outstanding athletic director at Nutley, Joe Pyro, who's a proud alum, loves his community that he grew up in, still resides here, loves the school he attended and competed for. For many years now, he's worked diligently to provide the best experience possible for the student athletes of Nutley. He's demonstrated superior leadership skills in his roles in the Super Essex Conference, the Super Football Conference, Essex County, Directors of Athletics Association in New Jersey, in the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, and as a result, has rightfully earned a reputation statewide as one of the best in this field. While going above and beyond his duties and on his own time, a misunderstanding of a historical reference took place, which is why we're all gathered here tonight. What transpired there does not warrant what has taken place now. This is a man who is excellent at his job, and as good as he is in that capacity, he's an even better person, as you've heard many times over tonight. He can and has done anything in his power to help too many people account. I urge you to read state Joe Pyro to his position as A.D. at Nutley High School with no further disciplinary action. To do anything else in this matter would be travesty, and it would be the student athletes and athletic program at Nutley that would suffer the most for no real reason. Thank you for listening and for your consideration and your request.
Thank you. The last person we're going to have be heard tonight is going to be Jesse Adler.
My name's Jesse Adler. I've had the pleasure of calling Joe Pyro my friend for over ten years. I'm Jewish. Both parents are against foot on the Upper East Side of New York, and I've had the distinct pleasure of going to Israel twice. Ironically, I also went to Burdell Catholic High School. I think that gives me a unique sight as it pertains to, quote, "inclusion" and the importance of sport in a young person's life. Joe leads a rule. One mistake should not define the man. It does not define his character. It should not erase the body of work or the quality of that work. If you know Joe, you know he has a heart of gold. Sport in a young person's life is a teacher of lessons. What is the lesson tonight that we send to the community and the kids? I believe it is a lesson of compassion and forgiveness. I believe it is a lesson that when our friends are down, we pick them up and that we're there for them. Thank you.
Do you arbitrate? Cut this off in a half.
Yeah. Can I please be? Your... Nutley residents, they should speak.
The board policy has a thirty-minute time limit for special meetings. It's up to the discretion, it's up to the discretion of the Board of Education. That's nothing to do with that. That was the order that was on the list.
That was the order that was on the list.
Well, apparently, women are...
I respectfully request to extend it fifteen minutes.
Minutes. Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA-10:4-12, now therefore be resolved the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel and attorney-client privilege. Be it further resolved that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda on the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or whether reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Do we have a motion to go into closed, please?
Make a motion.
Nutley residents, they need a chance to speak. Look out, Nutley people.
Let them speak.
Thank you. We got enough outside.
Well, let Nutley speak. Everybody have spoken.
Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin, here. Mr. DeMayo, here. Mr. Ferraro, here. Mr. Kazinsky, here. Mrs. Clark, here. Ms. Sarum, here. Mr. Cardassella, here.
Mr. Kazinsky, would you move that resolution, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Is this on? Can you hear me? It's on. It's on. Resolved that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the suspension of employee ID 1615 pursuant to NJSA-18A:25-6, and be it further resolved that the superintendent is authorized to reinstate employee following completion of reentry plan.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sound.
Uh, sound rare. Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin, yes. Mr. DeMayo, yes. Mr. Ferraro, yes. Mr. Kazinsky, yes. Mrs. Clark, yes. Ms. Sarum, yes. Mr. Cardassella, yes.
Okay. At this time, we can adjourn the meeting. We have a...
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.